All righty, well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to Bible Study at Bethel Lutheran Church. And today we are going to be in the seventh chapter of the book of Matthew. And before we get to that, we're going to review the sixth chapter. And before we get to that, a couple of announcements. For Lent this year, our Monday, Thursday Worship Service, that's the Thursday of Holy Week, Monday, Thursday, will be on the internet only. We won't have a live worship service here. We'll come up with something really nice that we'll broadcast or we'll put on YouTube there on Monday, Thursday for you. As well as our Good Friday Worship Service will also be on the internet. It'll be the Seven Last Words of Christ. That's pretty much the same thing we do every year for Lent. So tune in on Monday, Thursday, and Good Friday this year on the internet, of course. Easter Sunday, we'll be here live at Bethel. We'll be celebrating Easter Sunday, and Palm Sunday, the week before that, we'll be here live at Bethel. So hopefully, given the fact that many of us are getting our vaccinations done, it would be pretty much good to go for relative normalcy by Easter. That's a reasonable target, I think, at least as close as we can come to it. All right, so we're gonna have a good summer here at Bethel. God willing, when the creek don't rise. From last week, Chapter Six, there are several themes that appear, and one of them that jumps out is religious hypocrisy. He talks, Jesus, about making a public display of almsgiving. How people would trumpet their giving, and they'd come with a big entourage of people, and they'd give their money so that everyone could see them. And he says, "When you give your almsgiving private, so that your heavenly Father, who sees in secret, will reward you in secret." He talks about making long, meaningless prayers in public so that everyone could see you. Again, religious hypocrisy. And that's how we get to the Our Father in Chapter Six. He says, "No, go into your room, close the door, and pray like this." Our Father, to ward and have, right? There. So that your heavenly Father, who is in secret, can reward you in secret. And he presents the Lord's Prayer in the context of forgiveness. At the very end of the Our Father, he says, "For if you forgive others their trespasses, your heavenly Father will also forgive you; but if you do not forgive others, neither will your Father in heaven forgive your trespasses." So there we have a theme of reciprocal forgiveness. God forgives us if we forgive others. So there's a condition on the forgiveness. We have to be forgiving people. And again, he continues with fasting. They would fast and try to make themselves look gaunt and starving. He says, "Don't do that. Put oil on your heads. Make yourself look normal." He says, "Again, so your heavenly Father, who sees in secret, will reward you." Then he goes to material rewards. He says, "Do not store for yourselves treasures on earth, where moth and rust break in, right? Where your treasure is, there will be your heart also." He's warning against concentrating on material things. And then he goes into anxiety. "Do not be anxious about your life, what you will eat, and what you will wear." In other words, he's saying God will provide you with these things. A person who is a person of faith is not a worrier about material things such that those things become their God. And they are lusting after them, craving them, and serving them all their life. What does St. Paul say about money? First Timothy, it's First or Second Timothy, I don't remember. "The love of money is root of all evil." Right. And in that phrase, the actual Greek says, "All kinds of evil, all evils." It's plural. He says, "That one thing, the love of money, has caused a lot of different kinds of evil. And the love of money is behind it." The love of money is behind a lot of different kinds of injustice in the world that appear to be different things, but it's actually the love of money is at the root of it. Finally, he says, "Don't worry about tomorrow, for tomorrow will bring worries of its own." Everybody knows that to be true instinctively, right? Tomorrow will bring troubles of its own. You don't have to worry, there's always gonna be trouble. So if you... The Buddhist perspective on this, I've read a little bit about this, is that you're carrying a burden that you don't have to carry. You're taking tomorrow's burden and putting it on your back along with today's burden. And you're trying to struggle under the weight of both of those things, and let that be in the future. Pick up that burden when you have to. We'll deal with it when it comes up, kind of thing. Now, remember, it says, "Don't worry about tomorrow." He's not saying, "Don't just not plan anything in your life at all." A reasonable person knows that they're gonna need food tomorrow, and they might make sure they have employment or whatever and try to prepare for that. He says, "Don't worry about it. Don't obsess about it." Well, you gotta have new shoes once in a while. Yep. I think Chapter Nine is all about shoes. I'm pretty sure. It's all about shoes. All right. Let's get into Chapter Seven, shall we? Chapter Seven of Matthew, the first verse. Ready? "Do not judge, so that you may not be judged; for with the judgment you make, you will be judged; and the measure you give will be the measure you get. Why do you seek the speck in your neighbor's eye, but do not notice the log in your own eye? Or how can you say to your neighbor, 'Let me take the speck out of your eye, while the log is in your own eye?'" You hypocrite, first take the log out of your own eye, then you will see clearly to take the speck out of your neighbor's eye. Do not judge, because the same kind of judgment that you put on someone else will come back to you. What kind of judgment is he talking about? Because there are different kinds of... What we normally use the word judgment for? Yeah, you can talk. Well, everybody else can talk with you, yeah.
We don't judge other people. You gotta take a look at yourself first before you start criticizing somebody else.
Well, that's a good... That's very good. You know, criticizing is one kind of judgment with the intent to criticize, to make them less than you are. There is a judgment that is discernment. Somebody comes to the church for help. I know that they have a raging drug problem. And there's some people that I help, that we help, that have raging drug problems. I mean, they've got real serious problems. So we minister to them in certain ways based on a judgment. Is that wrong?
They're trying not to enable that.
Yep. There's good reason. So he's not talking about the kind of judgment that is discernment. We always have to discern what we're doing, right? And that's just common sense. What he's talking about is judgment as in sitting on the judgment seat. You're condemning the other person. Condemnation.
You're inserting yourself in the role of God, in other words.
Exactly, exactly. Keith, it's a form of idolatry, really. Putting yourself in the role of God. Because when we do that, it's gonna get done to us. So as before, when we had reciprocal forgiveness, forgiveness as we forgive, now we have reciprocal judgment. Judgment as we judge. Take the log out of your own eye, and then you will see clearly you have the speck in the log. Remember, when we talked about the law, Jesus said, "Not one jot or tittle." Okay, he used those real small, tiny examples. Well, here he's using a similar form of exaggeration, a similar form of metaphorical hyperbole to illustrate his point. Yeah, I'm trying to criticize Mark over there, which is an easy thing to do. And, you know, I see something wrong with Mark. It's just a little thing, you know, but it's a speck. And I've got a big old log in my own eye, you know?
There is some similarity to the stoning of the woman where Jesus says, whoever is without sin casts the first stone.
Excellent, yeah, that's exactly right. And he says that in many different ways. He shows the... Yes, Mr. Meyer?
There are, in the book of Proverbs, there are many in there that says, "Beware of talking about someone before you take a look at your own heart."
Amen.
Yeah. And they might be something that you disagree with, but what they're doing might not be so bad after all if you really know why they're doing something or what the root of it is, you know?
Yes.
And too many times, we make quick judgment on something, and, well, they're doing it maybe for a good reason, and you don't understand the reason, you know?
That's right, that's right. And that we don't have God's understanding, you know? We don't have the understanding of God, you know? You can be horribly wrong, but that really doesn't matter. He says, "Just don't do it. Avoid doing it if you can." What's the other expression? "People who live in glass houses should not throw stones." Remember that one? Yeah, there's probably a whole bunch of different ones that are kinda saying the same thing. All right. The culture that we live in is hypercritical. Now, I mean, you know, people get on Twitter and social media. Somebody does some little thing, and all of a sudden, they're jumping on them. I mean, that's just a... We kinda live in that... I don't know what it is. I've noticed that over the last five or six years especially, it's heated up a lot. I don't know, if it's a fad that's blowing through the culture.
Yeah, we got a name for it because it's like people, they're a lot more brazen on these social media names because they don't have to face the person that they're aiming at. So they can just fire up what they want and then pull back to business. But that's what's causing it to proliferate is they can fire something off out there and then just go with whatever.
Yeah, it's... Certainly is more brazen, and it's mean, too. It's like... It's impossible to have a "live and let live" type of thing anymore. You know? Everybody's gotta be all up in each other's business and criticize every little thing they do and... I don't know what that is. We get our self-worth from criticizing other people or something? I don't know what it is.
It's all about the...
Yeah, maybe. Now, "the log out of your own eye, and you will see clearly." Remember that we are closely on the heels of Jesus's previous teaching about the eye is the lamp of the body. Remember that? If the eye isn't clear, then the darkness is everywhere. So if you've got a big old log in your eye, obviously, the lamp isn't gonna work very long. All right, so we got that one there. And let's move on. This one's a little more difficult. It begins with verse six of Chapter Seven. "Do not give what is holy to dogs. Do not throw your pearls before swine, or they will trample them underfoot and turn and maul you." And maul you. What does this mean?
It means that, in my opinion, it means that there are times when you think that you've got so much that you can throw it away in a bad investment or this kind of thing. Not money in a bank, that kind of investment. An investment in somebody else's, either their time, their health, or whatever it might be. You can't be just throwing things away, and it's nothing.
Is this a cruel statement?
Is it a cruel statement?
Cruel. He's talking about what is holy, he's talking about. Not just something ordinary, what is holy. What is he referring to? And he's also talking about dogs. Who are the dogs? What is a dog for? A first-century Jew?
Lowlife, something outside of the house, probably.
Somebody who's not a Jew. Somebody who's unclean, unworthy. What is holy is... What?
Relationship to God.
Yes, but I think where he's going with it is that the gospel is your teaching. And when I give you my interpretation of this, it's gonna sound cruel, because it is. Don't waste your time on people who don't have the capacity to understand it, who don't want the message. And it's a cruel thing to say, but I think...
Dust off your sandals and move on, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can try to compel somebody to understand and all that stuff. At a certain point, you realize they never will. So you're done.
Yeah, and that's absolutely right. They never will understand. You have to make that judgment, that discernment, and that you're wasting your time. "Do not give what is holy to dogs" also means your time, because it ties you up. It takes your time. And while you're doing that, you can't be doing other things that are more profitable for the kingdom of God. If I'm sitting there arguing with somebody over something that we're never gonna agree on, they might wanna keep me tied up in that argument. Makes them feel good. I've had a couple of instances like that, where I've just had to catch myself and realize that this person has just tied me up. He's just yanking my chain, so to speak, you know? I've told this story before, but I'll tell it again. I used to do street ministry, night ministry, many years ago in Chicago. And we would be on the streets, a bunch of pastors on the streets, ministering to homeless folks and drug addicts and stuff like that. And I was sitting there at Dunkin' Donuts one night, having a cup of coffee, and I had my collar on. We wore our collars, you know? And I had my Bible in front of me, and I was reading it. So I get up to leave, and out of the corner of my eye, I saw this guy looking at me, and all of a sudden, he started saying some very disparaging things about the faith, which I cannot repeat here. And he wanted to draw me into an argument. I could tell. He just wanted to draw me in and go at him. It's like, "I'm wasting my time. Have a nice day, sir," and just walked out, you know? There are people who just wanna take your time, and it's not really gonna... You're not gonna help them, they're not gonna help you. You're just gonna waste your time.
There's a saying I heard once that I've repeated at home to the point where they don't like hearing it anymore. I've always said, "You can only wallow with a pig in the mud so long before you realize the pig likes it."
That's real good. "The pig likes it."
There are people and organizations who will come after anybody, anything, to get what they want. The moral standard with these people is down here. All they want is to get after you what you have, get whatever you have. And all you gotta do is watch a little bit on TV, and you can watch some of this happen. It happens right here, every day, with people who want something, but they make their living out of that. And not that they need it, it's just that they're gonna come after you. So they come, and they give you a story, a cell job, okay, that, "Oh, my God, I gotta help. I gotta help this organization. I gotta do this or that." And he's sitting in the back of his mind, and he's going, "Well, I got another one," you know? But I think this is what he's talking about here. Don't give everything to something that is meaningless. It's meaningless, you know?
Be discerning about your ministry. I think that one thing that's popping up now more than ever, although it's always been with us, there is profit in having the problem more than there is in solving it. You understand what I'm saying? Having the problem is profitable. There's a lot of money to be made, notoriety to be gotten, attention to be gotten, by having the problem. There are some problems that the people who are the advocates for solving the problem never want it solved, because then they don't have the problem anymore.
Otherwise, they lose their reason for being...
If you read what Booker T. Washington said about racism, it would shock you. It would shock you. He talked about people who always want to have the problem, who never want to solve it, because it's profitable to have the problem. It gets you attention, or as he puts it, it gets you attention and jobs.
Can give you leverage, too.
Leverage. But what if somebody actually ever solved the problem of racism? What if you actually solved the problem of racism? A lot of people would be at a loss because their whole identity is about that problem. It's like an old soldier without a war. So you could get into arguments with people who really don't ever want to solve the problem. Like the one I told you about the guy that I was talking to in the Dunkin' Donuts. He didn't really want to solve a problem. He didn't want to learn anything. He just wanted to tie me up. He wanted to have the problem. The difference between actually wanting to solve the problem and wanting to keep the problem, sometimes you can tell by how far they set the goalposts. Usually, when an organization is going along and they're trying to advocate to solve a problem, and they make another demand that, as you know, will never, ever happen, that's because they wanna have the problem. Yep, all right. And so it's very difficult. So the church has to remain the church, and it has to avoid being drawn in to giving what is holy to the dogs. You know, another example that I give sometime, and I think I've preached about that before. We get into arguments about whether you should have the Ten Commandments in the courthouse or at the Capitol Building and all that stuff. And people go to holy war over it, right? That's a diversion, in my opinion. Because that's not what Jesus told us to do. He doesn't care whether there's a monument to the Ten Commandments in the courthouse, because if it's in a courthouse, there is a commandment against lying, and somebody's breaking that every second, you know? I'm not worried about whether there are religious symbols on secular things. I don't think they deserve them, quite frankly. It's not my mission to plant the symbols of Christianity over everything. It's my mission to preach the gospel, not to fight holy wars over whether somebody displays the Ten Commandments. Personally, I think the display of the Ten Commandments in a public building is ridiculous, because that's where many of them are being violated the worst. So by engaging in that, we're kinda... What we call dissipating our energies. All right. And then here we go with verse number seven now. "Ask, and it will be given to you; seek, and you will find; knock, and the door will be opened to you. For everyone who asks receives; everyone who searches finds; for everyone who knocks, the door will be opened. Is there anyone among you, who, if a child asks for bread, will give a stone? If a child asks for a fish, will give a snake? If you, then, who are evil, know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more will your Father in heaven give good things to those who ask it?" It's just, I think, a little bit about encouraging the faith, encouraging people to keep striving. There's nothing wrong with not knowing everything. Do you folks remember Lady Dorothea Paul? Remember Dorothea? I went over to visit her once. She was 95 years old. She says, she said to me, "I learn something new every day." Old Dorothea. I remember going to see her in a hospital shortly before she passed. She was 96 years old, probably about a couple months before she passed. And she's in the bed there, and the nurses are running in and out of there, attending her, and they're fussing over her. And you could tell she was getting frustrated about it. And she says, "Hell!" She says, "I know what's wrong with me. I'm old."
She told me once, "I never buy green bananas."
"You never buy green bananas," that's pretty good. She was a stish. Yeah, there's a lot of other things that she said. Funny as hell. All right. Verse 12. "And everything do to others as you would have done them do to you; for this is the law and the prophets." What's that called? Golden Rule. But what Jesus calls it is the Law and the Prophets. And what does that mean?
That means you can condense most of what is said into this way of living.
That's right. It's all the authority. It's in the Law and the Prophets for Jewish people, right? At the least at this time. So he says, it's always saying, "That's everything. Just get that right, and you don't have to worry about anything else." Nice. All right. "Enter through the narrow gate; for the gate is wide, and the road is easy, that leads to destruction. There are many who take it; for the gate is narrow, and the road is hard, that leads to life; and there are few who find it." What does that mean in your own words, anyway? "Enter through the narrow gate."
It's easy to be influenced by the things of the world. It's easy to be influenced by the things of the world. Too many things are easy for you, for a person to do this or to do that. And it's not necessarily the will of God, or does it say what you really believe in your heart? It's easy to do things that are non-Christian. The gate is wide for that.
Right. No, I think you're right. Yeah, it's a, I kind of look at it, look at it as a statement about discipline. Doing the right thing is hard to do, like you said, it's just the harder thing to do oftentimes. It's easy not to be faithful than it is to be faithful. Alright, verse 15. Beware of false prophets who come to you in sheep's clothing, but utterly are ravenous wolves. You will know them by their fruits, our grapes gathered from thorns, our figs from thistles. In the same way, every good tree bears good fruit, but the bad tree bears bad fruit. A good tree cannot bear bad fruit, nor can a bad tree bear good fruit. Every tree that does not bear good fruit is cut down and thrown into the fire. Thus you will know them by their fruits. In your own words?
Actions speak louder than words.
Actions speak louder than words. Yeah? I know as we've gone through this COVID thing, a lot of our leaders have made rules that they'd like people to follow, you know? And some perceptive journalists have caught them in their violations, you know, of it. And they're there on the front page of the newspaper or on TV, having dinner with a bunch of their friends or violating their own stuff, it doesn't look very good for them, you know? Well, we all have to be wary of that, but if we're gonna preach it, we ought to be practicing it. So it's a good, for me, it's a good instruction for two things. One is beware of what I'm practicing, but also beware of what I'm preaching.
Beware of your life.
Beware of what I'm preaching. I like to preach a discount gospel because I'm not that good of a guide. You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna preach a Gandhi message because I can't meet the standard, you know? It would look ridiculous. My your fruits, you will not... Alright. Here's another good one here, verse 21 of chapter seven. Not everyone who says to me, "Lord, Lord," will enter the kingdom of heaven, but only the one who does the will of my Father in heaven. On that day, many will say to me, "Lord, Lord, did we not prophesy in your name and cast out demons in your name and do many deeds of powers in your name? But then I will declare to them, 'I never knew you, get away from me, you evil doers.'" So Jesus is basically reinforcing the point from the last part. Only the one who does the will of my Father in heaven.
Sounds a little like James.
James, also John to some extent. Say you love your neighbor, you don't, you know? James, yeah. Yeah. So God can't be fooled by the pretense of awiness. Yeah. Verse 24. Everyone then who hears these words of mine and acts on them will be like a wise man who built his house on a rock. Rain fell, the floods came, the winds blew, beat on that house, but it did not fail because it had been founded on rock. Everyone who hears these words of mine and does not act on, on them will be like a foolish man who built his house on sand. The rain fell, the floods came, the winds blew and beat against that house and it fell, and great was its fall. So when Jesus had finished saying these things, the crowd were astounding, astounded at his teaching for he taught them as one having authority and not as their scribes. Okay, two things, one is the gospel is the rock, that's the solid foundation. But it's not just the preaching of the gospel. He says, "Everyone who hears these things, these words of mine and acts on them is like the wise man who built his house on a rock." He taught them as one having authority and not as their scribes. So he says two things about how he taught them. One, it's like this and it's unlike that. How do the scribes teach?
Letter of the law.
Letter of the law. He's talking about the scribes and the Pharisees. They would often refer right back to scripture and take a line here and a line there and that's how they would build their teaching. Jesus is just teaching them. You notice there are no scriptural citations here on his lips.
You know, it's interesting, when we started the Sermon on the Mount back in the beginning of chapter five, it talks about Jesus seeing the crowds and it sounds like he withdraws from them.
Yes, it does.
Going only to his disciples. At the end of this, he refers back to the crowds again. And the crowds, Jesus finished these things, the crowds were astonished at his teachings.
Yes, so...
So it doesn't sound here like he's just talking to his disciples.
Well, it says, when Jesus had finished saying these things, the crowds were astounded. So they were hearing him. So at the beginning, you're right, it does appear as if he's gathered his disciples around him and, and he's teaching as a rabbi would teach his disciples. But by the end of it, the crowds are there. How that happens, that doesn't really say. Either I have misinterpreted the beginning of it.
Yeah, I don't know.
And they were always there. Or, or there is a transition somewhere, people are starting to make their way up the mountain.
I mean, I guess our vision of the Sermon on the Mount is kind of more like the, the end here that there were lots of people that had heard these words.
Yeah, that would be mine, yeah. I kind of see him expounding and people listening to him.
I think this, verse 24, or in that paragraph, applies so much to today because what he's, what he is saying here, when we stick with God, it's like being on the rock. That's the rock that we have in our, our life. There are so many other things around us today. All you gotta do is turn the TV on and it's this or that and you begin to wonder who in the world is right or wrong, you know? And this kind of thing. There is so much deception today. I mean, false claims, I mean, all you're gonna do is watch TV, watch the news and you can see what is happening. But in our lives, the things that we deal with, we can be influenced very easily by the cleverness of what we see, what we like to do and that kind of thing. But if we stick with God, God's word and the faith, that's the rock in our life. The next paragraph that says, "The guy that doesn't do that is like building his house on the sand." Once you start bowing in to some of the other things that's going on around us today and you do this and you do that, man, it doesn't take long, you're drifting away from God.
Yeah, yeah, I think you make a good point. And there's a, there's a malaise, a societal malaise that happens, even a sadness at the inability to find truth. You know, don't you get tired of knowing that...
It's the big problem with social media.
Well, it was, it's a problem, yes, it's one of it. But, but it's, it's the problem with where we are now is that people don't actually believe there is truth. They don't think it's, it's available to them. And that, that can really be, I mean, there's nothing that I can count on.
Because of anxiety?
Yeah, because of the anxiety, there's nothing that I can rely on. That's a, that's a, that's a terrible position to be in. And I think for, for many folks, even just walking around, they have that feeling that there's no truth, nobody even trying, you know? You can't believe what anything, anybody says, you can't trust anybody. And, and for those of us who are people of faith, this is the one saving grace, if you will, is that we already have that, so we don't get it out of the world. I don't expect the world to give me justice and I don't expect the world to give me truth. I mean, you find it occasionally and that's wonderful, but you see people just...
You have to turn it off. Just turn it off and concentrate on what's the most important.
Right, right.
Something you can really count on, you know, with the truth.
It's just, it's just a sad reality that, that malaise. And you can, you can see it happening in, in our country a lot, just people are just...
I see it is. Here's where I see it, just brain information overload. We get all kinds of info. You get it from the TV, you get it from social media, you get it from talking to people and all that stuff. And there's so much out there. And the problem is, it is a combination of true things mixed with bad things. And what's getting more and more difficult with, I'm just gonna say, using technology, they alter pictures, you know, you've heard about these, what they call deep fakes where they change a lot of stuff. All of a sudden, and this is, this is what I see is a very big problem is, you can't, you can't, it's, it's becoming more and more difficult to know what to trust. I mean, I've got certain places I get information and things I can't, and I trust them because they just built, and I've checked on them. You know, I just never take anything right off the bat until they earn that, you know? That my trust or whatever. But there's so much information out there and it's, and I get texts from my buddy all the time and it's, you know, it's stuff and I go, "That's fake." You know, and he'll type back, "I thought so." But there's just so much, and what happens is, is you're gonna have a certain number of people and it just, it just wears you out trying to figure out what's true. And so what you do is you just have a tendency to just shut it all off. So now you're not getting, you're not getting good information. You're not getting the bad information, but you're not getting the good now either. So where does that lead you? And I figure somewhere you're gonna be drifting in the middle of the ocean, no wind.
Just watch just a little bit enough to get, you know, keep your fingers fingered, but not twenty percent.
Well, can you imagine, I mean, you've said that you, you have certain sources of information that you, you can trust. Can you imagine folks who have not found anything they can trust?
Oh, I know there's, and these are people that are just basically kind of like shut down.
Yeah, and it's the malaise, is what I'm talking about. There is nothing that's trustworthy. That's, that's a horrible feeling.
There is, but it's getting harder and harder to find it because it is, it is just so easy and there's so much, it's like, where do these people find all this time to create this stuff?
But there is also, truth itself has been devalued in the culture. Telling a lie used to be a problem, now it's just...
Oh, I'm sorry, coffee.
No, just, just, and then there's the relativized truth, which is, "This is true for me, but it's not true for you in a way that..." So it's, it's just, you can understand the frustration that comes with not being able to rely on anything as being true, not being able to trust anything. It's sad. And I think it happens to be part of the world we live in right now. It makes you have no hope.
Things about despair.
Despair, that's a good one. Alright, so we know where the source of hope is, fortunately. And we do not despair. Folks, all get your vaccinations? Did you? Everybody get them?
Final one tomorrow.
I walked right into the mall and they were doing the Johnson and Johnson one.
Oh, you got it.
No waiting, right in there. So one, that's the one shot deal?
Did you get yours?
You just go over to the mall and Carl, Carl is doing it, you just walk right in.
Do you have to make your white dress?
Nope. I just walked in and they, the whole process takes about an hour because there's some paperwork that needs to be filled out. And then they make you wait, I think, fifteen minutes afterwards to see if there's gonna be an immediate negative reaction. I haven't had any negative reactions except for every time the phone rings, my pants fall down. I don't know what it is. Phone rings, pants fall right to the ground. How about you, did you?
Today's the last day for the mall, right?
Yeah, get in and get them.
It's a mark if you walk in.
It's a one-shot deal.
It's where the Hallmark stories used to be. Hallmarks, where the Hallmark stories used to be.
Walk right in there. And the lady told me, and I, I don't have any reason not to trust her, she said that the Johnson and Johnson one is good against some of the variants. I'm not sure that that's true, but I believe it.
Well, you hear a lot of, people are tapping the statistical numbers that Johnson and Johnson's not as efficacious. But when you, when you learn to understand statistics a little more, you know, it's a lower number, but it really doesn't mean that much. It doesn't mean as much as you think. Basically, they say, get an opportunity to get one, get one.
Yeah, who was it that told me about that? Was it you or was it Mike?
It wouldn't be.
One of you guys told, Mike, Mike, person maybe, somebody told me about it. So I just thought I, I was gonna run up there Sunday, actually. But I figured there'd be a lot, a lot of people on a Sunday. So I just went up yesterday, right after I left the office and walked right in. They took care of everybody, it was a very pleasant experience, actually.
Yeah, that's the one through car.
Yeah, they had a whole bunch of ladies there and they were just moving them through there.
They were that way at Fisher the last time I was there. We just walked right in.
Same here.
When I went up, it was easy except the computers went down.
Oh, no.
As soon as I walked in, they were playing with me for a while.
That's what I would do.
It's that magnetic aura that just throws off computers, it's terrible.
Well, they went down and the main Carl and champagne too, so I knew they'd be up pretty fast.
I thought, I thought I saw something on TV about what percentage of the population has been vaccinated. I can't remember what the percentage was, 20% maybe a little more?
Hey, 25, 20 or 25 have at least one shot.
Okay, that's good, that's good.
Yeah, we're, in fact, we're ahead of most of the countries in the world, particularly Europe.
Italy's only like 3%. And they had the big outbreak, they're going back into a lock.
Israel's almost completely vaccinated. It's a smaller country, obviously.
I wonder why Italy is so far behind.
Well, the recent problem is they, there's been some suspicion that the AstraZeneca vaccine, which is primarily the one used in Europe, there's been some bad reactions to it, or at least that's what some people thought. And I think now they're kind of debunking it. And I think now they're kind of debunking those. It probably wasn't the vaccine itself, some other things. But that slowed the vaccine process down a whole lot. And the willingness of people to take the vaccine.
Sure, well, if they think there's problems, they'll...
So they gotta overcome that.
We haven't really seen any vaccine wars, like we've seen, you know, the old electricity wars. You know, is it AC or DC that's better for you? It's better, you know, the old... We haven't seen the vaccines criticizing each other. They're all being very nice and...
Well, supposedly, nuclear people in the middle, the health people, health professionals say, whatever you can get, just easily get it, because they all are basically pre...
Very responsible, yeah.
Couple of them actually work together.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Yeah, I was surprised to see America join up with J&amp;J.
Yeah, that's right.
The rival companies.
Some of the companies, yeah. See, we can do good things when we want to. There's hope.
I used data for use out of the car.
What's that? What's that?
I used antifreeze out of the car.
You did?
Yeah.
The antifreeze, yeah.
Yeah, it's good year-round, yeah. You can join those polar bear fundraisers without any worry at all, then, can't you?
Does anybody, they don't know yet how often you have to take that?
Yeah, it's still I'll probably measure some people get the vaccine and it's how long their antibodies last. We could be in a situation where it could very well work out where it's like a flu shot, technically, which isn't the end of the world if it'll keep everybody. I remember my supervisor during insurance turnip shift, he used to always be yelling at me to get a flu shot, and he'd be sitting across from me sniffing one with the flu and everything. You go ahead and get it. Any questions, comments, snide remarks? Mark? Snide remarks at all?
Do you know what you get when you cross a termite with a praying mantis?
Nope.
You get an insect that says "grease" before it eats your house.
Good to have you back, Mark. Now, do you trust what I just said? Let's conclude with the Our Father. Thanks for coming, everybody. Our Father?
Father in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is the kingdom, and the power, and glory forever and ever. Amen.
Alright, go in peace and serve the Lord.
Thank you, God.
Thanks for coming, everybody. God bless.